Let's go to item number two, oral communications. Those persons wishing to speak or address the Planning Commission on subjects other than those scheduled or requested to do so at this time, please provide your name and address for the record. In order to conduct a timely meeting, a three-minute time limit per person has been established. And Madam Deputy City Clerk, do we have any speakers?
Yes, George Kibbit would like to speak.
Okay, welcome Mr. Kibbit to the podium. Good morning, good afternoon.
Just real briefly, as you're aware, the G-PAC is moving along. They've had several of the public meetings and some pretty lively debate and a lot of feedback from the community that was good. And I know Ryan's been very involved in the process together with the committee and as well as Brianna and Laura and such, and their presence and just ready to answer questions when the committee has any questions has been much appreciated. If you haven't already, there's a survey that's available and guessing you probably are aware and hopefully have all taken it, the more input that the committee might consider would be all the better. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. And yes, as Mr. Kibbit noted, there are survey cards out on the counter at the front desk and I believe the latest e-letter also had a survey notation in it as well. So, okay, thank you. Is that all we have for speakers?
Unless there's anyone online, but I can't, on Zoom, I can't see if anyone's hands raised. I don't see it. Anyone see it?
I don't see anybody. I just see me and I don't like looking at you.
No, I don't see a raised hand.
I'm gonna hide by my screen. Okay, so seeing no other speakers, we'll move on. Item three, consent agenda. We have one item. It's the approval of the July 10th, 2023 minutes. I'd like to get a motion in a second. Okay, Brenda makes a motion. Is there a second? Mike? Okay, any discussion? If not, I'd ask for a roll call on that if we can...
We don't need a roll call.
Signify by saying aye.
Yes.
I'd like to abstain.
Collectively, if it was approved, aye.
Sorry, did you say you're abstaining?
Yes.
Thank you.
So we'll make a note. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The opposed? And we'll note the abstention for Joaquin. So that's two, four, five, oh, and four. Okay. Item four, public hearings. We have a Zone Text Amendment number 2023-07, ordinance submitting Lumita Municipal Code Title 11, Planning and Zoning, to update the mixed-use overlay district regulations and allow mixed-unit development to contain up to four or fewer units within the downtown commercial or DC zone and recommend that the act should be found exempt from California Environmental Quality Act. This is an item that was continued from our July meeting. This was based on an application from Mr. Luis de Morris on behalf of Machida Academy. And the presentation will be by Associate Planner McMoran, but she's not here. So who's gonna do?
She's presenting over Zoom.
Oh.
She's in attendance on the Zoom and if the city clerk could bring up the presentation.
So Laura, with no further ado, would you like to make your presentation, please?
Yes, thank you so much Chair Camerata. Good evening, Commission. Is the Zoom up? Is the PowerPoint up? I'm sorry.
Just a second. It looks like you're good to go.
Okay, yes, that's up.
Great. So yes, tonight is a continuation of last month's hearing on a Zone Text Amendment to allow mixed-use developments with four or fewer residential units to create, have an incentive or concession if they provide an affordable unit in the downtown commercial zone with a mixed-use overlay. This slide shows the area of the city where the DC and mixed-use overlay overlap. It fans out from the intersection of Narbonne and Lumita Boulevard. Next, please.
And so just to clarify, this entire ordinance being proposed tonight is only about those red areas?
So this is kind of some really granular information. In total, there are 47 properties that will be affected. Already in the zone, 14 contain residential. Some are mixed-use, some are residential only. Of those 47, of those 47 properties, 28 properties, based on their lot size, are limited to developing four or fewer units due to our density, our dwelling unit per acre designation. And then of those 28 properties, nine of them already contain residential units. The one interesting fact we found when doing this lot-by-lot summation for the area in question was these six blocks have an FAR, combined FAR of .48. And the zoning district with the mixed-use overlay allows an FAR of .2. So right now, we're only hitting a quarter of what is potentially allowed up to. So it's, we should note that. Next slide, please. So just to review, the proposed Zone Text Amendment is consistent with the land use as well as consistent with the zoning use. This text amendment addresses Housing Element Program 7, which is to incentivize affordable housing in the city. And it also kind of levels the playing field between the state's density bonus law, which is only allowed for projects with five or more units. And this gives the smaller properties, which are really the bulk of our properties in the DC's mixed-use overlay zone, an opportunity to be, I don't want to say competitive per se, but be eligible for some development that other properties that are larger are. Next slide, please. So here we are. This is what, you know, the downtown mixed-use properties look like pre-2006. All these projects, all these buildings were built prior to our current zoning. You can see most have long-street frontages. There's either parking access on the side, or it's very limited, or not at all. Next slide, please. Also, in the last hearing, I showed you those pictures. In doing the granular block by block, we left out these three. So in total, right now, we have what we call nine non-conforming mixed-use properties in the DC zone. Next slide, please. So at the July 25th General Plan Workshop, there was a map laid out on for people to give their feedback. And in numerous maps, people were saying they wanted to see mixed use in the downtown with a vertical style of development, meaning residential above ground floor, commercial. And then at the August G-PAC meeting, these were some concepts that were presented as to what it looks like when you're getting into 30 units dwelling acre, or 30 dwelling units an acre. And as you can see, these kind of concepts are consistent with what we already have built, what was built pre-2006. Next slide, please. So tonight, the Planning Commission has three options, which would be to recommend the ordinance to the City Council, to recommend denial of the ordinance to City Council, or to recommend approval of the ordinance with amendments. So after the last hearing, the applicant submitted a letter, which is an attachment to the staff report, requesting that the proposed amendment be limited to existing commercial spaces. And that was in response to concerns raised about parking. You know, they felt that their project in particular, which is 1,500 square feet of second-floor office space, would not have as many required parking spaces as if it was converted to residential. And so if it wasn't one of these uses, office, personal service, or retail, the parking ratio is at 1 to 300. And with approximately 1,500 square feet, the required parking per code would be five spaces. However, if it was, if this became three residential studios, then the required parking would be four spaces. So in effect, their required parking requirement is less as a residential project. Next slide. The applicant's revised proposal to restrict the incentives and concessions to existing commercial space, conversion of existing commercial space, would allow for three buildings within the DC mixed-use overlay zone to be eligible for this opportunity. Next slide. You know, so staff still stands behind the, our original ordinance as proposed. We feel that it hits the Housing Element Program 7 goal and are here for any questions.
Thank you Laura for that presentation. Does anybody have any questions for Laura? Monica?
Not at this time.
Okay, Brenda?
Not at this time.
Joaquin?
No, Mr. Attorney.
Mike?
No.
Dave? Okay, we can then go back to see if the applicant is here. I believe he is. We'll invite him up to the podium to speak again. I believe it's Fernanda, I'm sorry.
So the presentation should be on the screen right now.
Waiting for that, that's why I was waiting.
Yeah, but for some reason, it's opted off too. Is there something on your end, Linda, that we can change, like input or something? I took the photo, thanks.
While we're waiting, is it Luis de Morris, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. If you want to start, we can start and hopefully the presentation will come up on the screen. I don't know how much of your discussion involves a presentation, but if you want to get started.
I can't, I can't. Oh, there it is. There it is. Again, my name is Luis de Morris. I am the architect for the project. My company's Enviro Techno Architecture in Torrance, 3635 Newton Street. Yeah, so I'm representing my client, the Machida family. And I took some good notes of the comments from the Planning Commission last time. And the first slide, we just showed the building, which you know the building's right there. If you've noticed, I would assume how long it's been for lease and how unsuccessful we have been with finding tenants for a second floor, a little narrow stairway to get to a, not a very friendly, a commercial space. So this idea came about in an alternative to that, which I think would be beneficial. So it's important to note that, and again, a lot of the focus was based on the parking requirements and considerations for increased parking demand and cluttering even more the neighborhoods, the neighborhood streets and so on. So we focused mainly on that. But not that it would be necessarily appropriate to consider the, yeah, this is a good slide. So this one, that one, yeah. So it shows that there is a public parking space next to us and there's parking all on Narbonne. So that's, you know, not that, that would necessarily, we can claim those, but by this parking around. And then there's a little gray area on the left side of the slide that I'm showing. We have about a five, six-foot buffer in the back that we could put some bike racks and also help alleviate that, which in other cities, that seems to be a way that we've been reducing parking demand for the general standards. But I forgot to the, yeah, so that one, you already know what it is. It's just the upper level. So if we go to the next one, Brianna. And this is just a diagram I'm showing. It's only the portion of the building on the front because the back of it is a two-story volume that we're talking about. We have no intentions to increase any square footage. So this is all existing square footage that's being just converted back. So if we go to the next one. So I think the key thing specifically to our project is the distinction between new development and existing commercial. Because new development affords the ability of designing parking within the project. And other than just accommodating the standard parking requirements, which, you know, we do in any, in any new project, there's alternate ways of meeting parking demands with new projects, such as, you know, within a certain distance of the property. I believe the planning department has a limit of 500 linear feet that you can actually lease out and have that be on the deed of the other property if they have extra parking. And then other options such as shared parking between the commercial spaces so that the man for night parking is used where the other commercial spaces are not being used that night. And I think Laura mentioned that in Luffees is not something that you guys typically do here, but we do use that, which is, you know, a value from 25,000 to 30,000, which is used for possible development of parking structures. So that's, a lot of cities do have that. So again, so in our case, we're existing commercial building, which there's basically only three, which was a great exercise. And I appreciate Brianna and Laura working so hard and pulling out all that data. But there's only three buildings like us. And now they have already been, that already have the residential part on the building already, the legal non-conforming. So less parking in residential compared to the commercial like Laura had in her chart. We brought that up again. For your current code, 300 square feet per parking stall, that's five with three studio units. I don't see more than three stalls required for the residences. So the next slide, Brianna, please. So again, I also think there's other, other than the affordable housing benefits to help the city comply, inch their way towards meeting the state requirements, which every city is going through. I think more pedestrian during the weekends, more support for retail, more restaurants. So I think that's a positive altogether. And I think considering that there's public transportation nearby, again, going back to parking, bicycle parking. We work in a lot of projects in Santa Monica who is very forward-thinking in terms of environmental approaches and bike parking and all kinds of different, more considerable social intent for, you know, for progress. So, and very sensitive to a lot of parking issues, as we know. And like I put down, Uber Lyft is more popular than ever. So if we can maybe make a distinction within your Zone Text Amendment of new development versus existing, I think would be a fair assessment of, anyway, that's what I got. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, thank you. I think we'll open up the public hearing unless there's...
If you have questions with the applicant.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Does anybody have any questions for the applicant? Monica?
No.
Okay, Brenda?
No.
Joaquin?
I do not.
Mike?
The area you indicate for bicycles at the back of, how is that accessible to the residents? Well, because...
How do they access that area?
Because of the public parking, it's all open. So you can go, if you look in the top part of the diagram.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the whole side is open, so you can go right in in the back.
So they come down from upstairs?
Well...
And walk down to the back of the, back of the property and in there, right?
To the front. So they would have to walk around their public parking area.
Okay, and what, how is that, is that a secure area for them?
It can be. Right now, I believe it's open, but we can lock that up. And right now, it's, we're not using that for anything.
Right. And there's current, the current plan is, the requirement would be for three parking spaces additional for this, and there are none. Is that correct?
That's correct, but there's five required existing that don't exist.
Right.
Because there's commercial now and...
Thank you.
There's no parking, yeah. Thank you.
Jay, any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, why don't we open up the public hearing? And if there's anybody that wants to speak on this matter, Linda?
George Kibbit?
Okay. We will welcome Mr. Kibbit back up to the podium.
Thank you once again, members of the Planning Commission. I spoke about, on this item when it was before you, I think it was last month, and I'd expressed my, that I'd given it a lot of thought. And I was initially against the idea. And, you know, but I guess a man's allowed to change his mind. And after thinking it through, I thought that I am in favor of the change to the mixed-use overlay via this Zone Text Amendment. I'm glad, and I guess it would be Laura, that she also included the property at 24646 Narbonne, which is in the downtown zone as one of the examples of a small mixed-use property. Very familiar with that site. It's a property that I brokered several years back. And the current owner has made some additional improvements to that one. But I am familiar with this site. And I do know the broker that made a very diligent effort to lease those upstairs offices. I'd actually had a possible client for it, but then they, you know, just with the way the stairs were and such, they just didn't feel as conducive for a second-story office for their business. But it's a broker that I've done business with. And like I said, I know he made a very diligent effort to lease those, but it just didn't happen. Especially when you consider the changes, you know, just kind of putting things overall in perspective, when you consider the overall changes that are being made in regards to density, you know, through the housing element, what's going to be coming through, suggestions to council and planning staff with the, you know, the G-PAC and such, the densities are going to increase. And there's no doubt about this. And I think this would be a very, you know, positive thing to do for the downtown area. You know, they do have the storage in the back. I do like the idea of making that a secured gated area. And that way, you know, bicycles, I mean, they're expensive nowadays. And maybe they could even have area for some e-bikes, which are quite popular and such. And just to give the residents another means of mobility. It is very close to public transit in the area. And I've expressed before, putting any increased density where possible, close to public transit in our mixed-use areas. Let's see. And they do have an existing hardship without the parking. And it's just partly the way buildings were built, you know, years back, you know, to the lot lines quite often. There is some history to this building, but the present owners have, you know, maintained it well. I'd expect that in the future. And I really think it's a good idea and I would suggest approval of this item. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kibbit. Any other speakers online? No? Okay, I will close the public hearing and move it back to the Commission. Does anybody have any comments before we move forward? Does anybody have any comments before we move forward to either approve or disapprove it? Brenda?
Yeah, I just have a couple. Thank you, Mr. Ellis, for, for the presentation, and I appreciate that you took what we spoke about last month and, and revised it. Just to be clear, it's three, the proposal is three residential units to go up there? I don't know, my notes were lost.
This project is by 1,500 square feet currently commercial to become three 500-square-foot studio apartments.
Okay.
At an affordable, affordable component.
And they would be required to have only three parking...
I'm sorry, could you say that?
Three parking spots is what would be required opposed to the commercial side?
One per studio, and then if you were to have a guest parking spot, it would be one yielded by the three.
Okay, thank you.
Joaquin?
I just go back a little bit to the presentation, just to make sure that I'm clear here. How many other properties are there in this area that this could also come up with? They said there's nine? There's currently nine, but that, those already contain?
Yeah. I can clarify that, Commissioner Graff.
Thank you.
This is Laura, and it would be 21. So as you can tell, there are constraints affecting development of residential. You know, our standards are, are placing some burden on redevelopment. Some of it is our lot sizes in the DC. They are small. Assembly, which was one of, land assembly, which had been, you know, an idea of the past, has not materialized. We discussed that at the last meeting, that there are so many variables that have to go in for that to align. And, you know, as we can see, our DC is, it's charming, it's quaint, we have good street But there's only so much ground floor space. Any lot that's 5,000, 6,000, 7,000 square feet, they, they have, to make certain things work with our development standards, it just, it, it's, it kind of suffocates some development. So that's why we're proposing this kind of win-win as we see it. The win is we gain an affordable housing unit, which we're, and fulfilling our program requirement, and then also, you know, having that vitality, that energy brought to our downtown when you create living in a space. And that's more long-term, yeah.
How many more properties could do the same thing that this is requiring, that this is requesting, or, or that this code would, would allow? And in this case, like the property we're discussing right now, how many more would create a need for four parking spaces and not have any?
That I don't know, because first and foremost, this isn't necessarily about, it probably would be, but this isn't about waiving parking in and of itself, because some of those lots have room. It's, some of them may be developed. I, I do want to remind everyone of the density bonus project that went through last year. Although they could have argued, they, you know, for no parking and filled it up, they did provide some. So I think if the market, if, if, if space is available, the developer will want to do it. But if it's not available, the question, I guess, is, are we, what's more valuable? Parking or housing? And then, of course, housing and affordable housing. We're only talking about 47 properties in our DC zone. This is not a all-encompassing ordinance. So I do want to keep in mind that the parameters here, although this is a bit of a paradigm shift, let's just say someone did decide to assemble two of these 21 lots. They would be in the five-plus category, five-plus unit category already then, and they would be eligible for the state law. So we're kind of filling a void with ours and keeping the scale that's already existing.
I'm not, I'm not refuting that. I was just asking questions with regard to other properties that we could be, that are existing, that we could face this. Does this, does this allow a, and I'm just using this as an example, a single-story commercial property to come in and add units on it, on it, above it without having to provide additional parking? If they put four or less units? I mean, if you had a piece of property and say, oh, well, you know, I want to take advantage of this new allowable, I guess you'd say, requirement, could I build up on my single level and put in four units and not have to have any parking?
So to clarify that...
I'm, I'm just, I'm trying to understand whether that's a possibility or not.
It depends on a lot of different things. One is if there's five or more units, so if a building has, has space or five or more units, they're already allowed to do this. They're already allowed to go through the density bonus ordinance that the state requires and the city has since adopted. And if they provide affordable housing, not provide the parking onsite. So the idea of this one is to level the playing field for if it's a smaller property of four or less. And so there's 47 total properties in that, that little red area we showed at the beginning. And so the applicant is here representing just one of those. A lot of them already have, are already built out. Those ones would not be able to comply. But if you do have any just single-story, like the, like lots on the corner of Limita Boulevard in Narbonne are one story, if you were to add a second story right up there, they could allow four or less units. And if they do include affordable components to that housing, they put, make the rent in the affordable level, LA County's numbers, then they could have the incentive, use the incentive to not, to not provide that parking onsite.
Thank you.
So the question is, do you want more affordable housing or...
I understand.
And just to clarify, we're put three affordable housing...
Sorry, could you repeat that?
Three, three affordable housing.
This, this is proposed, three units, correct?
Jay, any questions? No questions for me? And then the last one, Mark?
Oh, no.
Thank you. If there's no further comments or questions, is there a motion on the floor?
Some.
And just for the record, Joaquin, if you would just spell out the motion so that we have it for Linda to make a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve. Go ahead.
Oh, you, I'm just saying, for item 4A.
I'll make a motion to, well, I need it back on my screen so I can...
Oh.
There it is right there, because I'm texting.
There it is. Make a motion to adopt as recommended by staff ZTA 2023-07 for less residential units with a mixed-use overlay developments in downtown commercial zone.
Okay, so there's a motion to second that? Brenda, seconds. Any more comments or questions? If not, all in favor of that motion, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? So it will pass six to zero. Okay, very good.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Let me know about that.
Okay, next is item, public hearing item number 4B, conditional use permit number 326 at 2155 Pacific Coast Highway within the commercial retail CR zone, and finding that the action be exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act or SEQA. The applicant is V. Vargas on behalf of Grocery Outlet, which is at that same location, 2155 Pacific Coast Highway. And the presentation will be by Community and Economic Development Director Brianna Ringe. So Brianna, take it away.
Good evening again, Planning Commissioners. So this is a conditional use permit to allow for the sales of, for off-site consumption of beer, wine, and spirits. And this is the former Big Lots space adjacent to the 99-cent store along Pacific Coast Highway. So the whole property, even though it's adjacent directly abutting the 99-cent store, there are actually two properties. As you may recall, we went through a few meetings ago, maybe this past spring, to allow for parking amendments as related to the, to restaurants on that corner of that site. And so they had some parking lot upgrades that if you went to the site to look at it today, you'd see those update, upgrades have been made. So now this one's coming in next, and it is consistent to alcohol sales for off-site consumption, is consistent with the future land use designation, which is commercial, and it's adjacent to commercial, and it does not front any of the residential, as you can see that those front to the north while this property fronts to the south. Same with the zoning, it's pretty much the same where it's commercial, flanked by other commercial uses, and there's residential beyond to the north of it. The view from the front, and there are several existing commercial uses to the east, the area that's outlined in red, the subject site is outlined in yellow, and then the same to the west, the area I just mentioned, the 99-cent store, the NOOK, et cetera. There's the rear loading dock, which of course with this project, they would be sprucing up. And this is the floor plan, the pink kind of smiley face looking, that, those are the, the shelves which will contain the alcohol sales, so it's about 4% of the store.
And the yellow wine meeting?
Right by the door. Well, kind of, sort of. So there are several findings required for approval for the CUP because it's in the CR zone and it's the sale of alcohol. So we have done the research and found that there are no sensitive uses within 300 feet of this proposed establishment. There are two off-site consumption alcohol retailers within 300 feet. We have the, there's 7-Eleven, KB Food Mart's Plus, there is Rolling Hills Market and Ace High Liquor on Limita Boulevard in Narbonne, and then further down on PCH. So the staff finds that to allow this would create additional grocery options for residents and visitors, and as I mentioned before, similar to Targets that you heard a couple months ago, that this affords applicant, applicants, this affords customers to the convenience of shopping for alcoholic beverages at the same time as the rest of their cuisine. And so they do have sufficient parking, they actually have more than enough parking and would be yielded for this use, and as well as sufficient circulation, circulation in and out. So the applicant is required to obtain a public convenience and necessity approval letter to be able to move forward with their ABC license, and the first step is the CUP. So we've got the CUP hearing right now. Tomorrow night at City Council is the public convenience and necessity hearing, it's on the consent agenda. So once those are approved through the appeal period, then they'll be able to proceed forward. Just anecdotally, they did pass already Planning Site Plan Review and are with the county for review right now. So they recommend conditions of approval, just to highlight a few crimes being reported to, well, actually, this is all of them, crimes to be reported to the Sheriff's Department as a standard condition we've been adding. They did request 6:00 AM to 11:00 PM to be the opening hours of the store, so that would be a condition of approval. Another condition is that they must obtain that letter, which is going before council tomorrow night. It must be ancillary to the food market, which as you see by the site plan, which the approval is tied to, it is ancillary, it's about 4%. No advertising can be visible from the outside related to the alcoholic beverages, and graffiti must be removed within 48 hours. They must keep the premises free of litter. There should be sufficient lighting to monitor all conduct in the parking and loading areas, and they shall also monitor to prevent loitering, and none of the alcohol may be consumed onsite. It is only for off-site consumption. So Planning Commission has the option to approve as recommended. You can approve with amended conditions, either removing or adding or changing. You can also deny the application, or you can provide the applicant and staff with further direction to come back at a later date.
Okay, thank you, Brianna. Any questions for Brianna? Monica?
No.
Brenda? Joaquin?
I do not.
Mike?
No.
Jay? Okay.
We do have the applicant on Zoom, yeah.
I, I do have that. Okay, good.
Is Target going to sell alcohol for the same as this?
Offsite, yes.
Offsite use? Target's going to, had, had they already been, did we, have they been approved already? They're in the process?
They already went through our process.
Okay, okay, I couldn't remember.
I was about to bring that back.
It was the spring time.
Thank you, I couldn't remember. Thank you very much.
I was about to bring that back as my comment to just confirm that Target's already been through it and sure they've got their...
On the south side of PCH, correct?
Okay. Okay, is the applicant here?
On Zoom.
On Zoom? Okay, so we'll let the applicant take the Zoom podium, if you would, and that will be V. Vargas, welcome.
Well, hello, Planning Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be here with you guys today. With me, I have our consultant, Katie Sharp, who has been working with us for decades to assist us on all the ABC licenses through our over 450 stores that we have nationwide. We're excited to be part of the community and offer this additional item for the convenience of the customers and the community members that shop in our store. Welcome, any questions that you may have, but I'll, I'll wait here to answer any of your questions.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Vargas. Does anybody have any questions for the applicant? Brenda?
No, no, thank you.
I'm not going to say Monica the last, but Monica? Joaquin?
No, sir.
Mike?
The only question I have is when do you plan to open the market? Approximately? I just curious.
Let me see, as soon as we get done. Actually, we are right now through the review of the building permit. We do build our stores pretty quickly. Speed to market is very important to us. So hopefully, we will have this open within the next, you know, depending on the CD, how the CR, actually, the LA County that is reviewing our documents, but then probably the next 12 months will be open, or before then, hopefully.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
And Jay, anything? Okay. Well, we do want to welcome you to the community, and it's good to see another grocery store going in, so glad to see you're putting the tent stakes in Limita. Thank you.
My pleasure.
Okay, with no further questions for the applicant, then I would open up the public hearing, and I will ask Linda if we have any speakers.
Yes, George.
Okay. Mr. Kivitt, welcome back up to the podium again.
Thank you once again. And I'm all for economic development in our city, as, especially as a longtime resident, President Volte, Chamber of Commerce in town. I like this, and I'm getting a lot of positive feedback from neighbors, friends, acquaintances in the area that they're looking forward to shopping here. The, the sale of, you know, alcohol will be, it'll be alongside of all the food items that they're going to be carrying. I like the idea that the alcohol sales, you know, area, the, the display area will be in the back of the store, that, I like that idea, and I very much like the idea that they'll be responsible for graffiti removal within 48 hours. That, that is exceptional. I didn't know that, you know, might be included, but I really like that. I don't have anything but just positive thoughts as to their moving forward with this, and I like the idea that within four months, we'll have another grocery. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kivitt. Any other speakers on the Zoom? Linda?
Uh, no.
Okay. We'll close the public comment hearing and bring it back to the commission for any other comments or questions before we vote on this, and we'll start with Jay this time. Jay, any comments, questions?
No.
Mike?
No.
Joaquin?
No.
Brenda?
I have a question for Brianna.
In there somewhere, I heard you say they'd be responsible for the parking area. And I know the 99 cent store is separate, totally different, but keeping the homeless people out of that parking lot, which is an issue in that whole center. What was it that you said regarding that?
One of the conditions?
The proposed resolution states that the licenses shall monitor the area to prevent loitering.
Okay. Because like I said, I, I know that that shopping center, it's not alone, but there is a lot of people that kind of hang out there, you know? So that was my only, my only question. So thank you.
Monica? I actually did have another question now that Brenda brought that up. I didn't see anything in here, but are they going to do any improvements to that parking lot?
Yes. The, I'm pulling up the, I can, we can allow the applicant to speak again if you'd like to go into detail. But the site plan, that's, I'm not sure if you can see the presentation.
Yeah, I couldn't really tell on there, that's why I was asking.
Oh, okay.
Dress it up a little bit.
Right. They have ADA requirements. I'm not sure, are you able to see the presentation on there?
No, we can see you.
Oh. Oh, no.
Maybe I can ask Ms. Vargas if she's still available, just quickly.
I am, I am, yes, of course. So will be improvements to bring this site to ADA compliance. It will be new landscaping, updating the lighting. And because Grocery Alley has a unique business structure, we partner, somebody will be the owner of that store. And so they take upon themselves to make sure that lottery, no people hanging around it. It could, it could jeopardize our ABC license, are discouraged to just being, hanging out if you're not shopping or being, you know, attending to the business of the shopping centers. So we take that pretty seriously.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
JP, can you get us off the screen?
Intimidating.
It is. Okay, with that being said, I will ask for a motion.
So moved.
To approve second. Item PH 4B, Public Hearing 4B. So there's a motion by Mike and a second by Joaquin. Any other comments or questions? If not, all in favor of this motion, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, passes five to zero. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's see. Item number five, we have another holdover item. This is scheduled matters. It's 5A, discussion and consideration of the Planning Commission bylaws. This was continued from our July 10th, 2023 meeting. And I know that Brianna had sent out a couple of emails reminding everyone to be here. And I know we're missing Bob. Does anybody have any feeling about moving forward? Or you just want to wait for Bob to chime in on this? Do you want to do it? Okay, I'm just asking. Anybody feel comfortable moving forward with this? Or do you want to wait for Bob? Because we did say at the last meeting, we wanted the full commission. Now we're still minus Bob. Anybody have any feeling over the other? Monica?
It's not a major deal. Why don't we wait for Bob?
Well, that, that was my thought last time, and I'm thinking the same. I just want to make sure I didn't want to do it.
Bob better be here next time. Or we just move on with that?
Right, okay. Brenda, you okay with waiting?
I'm fine.
Joaquin?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mike? Okay, Jay? Okay, so I'd like to make a motion that we continue this again to the next meeting. Motion a second. Anybody have any comments? If not, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay. So with that, we can go to item 5B, which is communications regarding city council actions.
Yes, so tomorrow night is city council meeting. They will be reviewing the Miro's ordinance that you all recommended approval of at your July meeting. And then the, the item tonight that you all recommended approval of, the zoning tax amendment for the four or less units, that would go, have to see if it'd be September 5th or 19th, would be the first hearing before council.
So they'll do the zoning tax amendment 2023-7?
Yes, it'd be, the first reading would be in September.
Okay. Okay, item C, any upcoming developments in businesses?
Yes, so we provided the quarterly update that we've started doing this year to you, this bright yellow sheet. It's also placed online. It's also on tomorrow night's monthly report from our department to the city council. It has since been updated since last week, actually. Or since, I guess, two weeks ago. One is that the restaurant at 2270 PCH, they withdrew their application, or withdrew the review, the pre-application. And then we also have that burn-in daylight, which you all approved for their outdoor dining in the east side of the property. They're about to start construction soon.
What was the address in the PCH restaurant again? 20?
2270, it's currently a US bank building.
Oh, the one on the corner, 2270?
We don't have any applications in at this time for any.
The 2270, right?
Mm-hmm. So the updated version is online of this.
Okay, item 6, staff announcements, 6A staff announcements.
I guess two of our biggest projects, well, two, two of the biggest topics we've been working with across the past month. One is code enforcement as it relates to graffiti. I am launching a graffiti abatement program that will be partnered, it'll be kind of three parts. One of them is going to be an ordinance that really gives the city the teeth it needs to enforce it quicker. Because the issue, obviously, the city deals with the graffiti on its public property, but it's the private property that the city can't just go on to the private property to, to abate the graffiti. So it's, it's how can we make this the quickest, most efficient? Because oftentimes, even as recently as last week, we get it abated and it's tagged the same day. It's, it's a real big issue. So we're also looking at ways, maybe planting trees in front of the walls that might help fend off the graffiti. Or adding murals, City Y, that's council's reviewing tomorrow night. That, as well as feeding wild animals. We're having like a feral cat and whatnot issue in the prop, in the city that cities nearby have adapted ordinances that you can't feed those. So that's something that will be before council just for discussion to see if they want an ordinance like that. It's not in the zoning ordinance, so it wouldn't come before Planning Commission. But I thought it might be relevant to you all. Last is the general plan update. We closed the third of the three public workshops for this year. The next one will be next January. More information to come on the details of that. But that's when you'll actually be reviewing the proposals and the documents. And so for now, we've done three of the eight GPAC meetings where they're evaluating alternatives and going through different land use options, transportation options, streetscape options in different areas of the city. Of course, those items will come before Planning Commission specifically. And the survey will be closing Monday, the 21st. We had a special e-newsletter last week, last Wednesday, that was sent out that also included a specific synopsis of each of the three public workshops. So you can see what's kind of risen to the top in terms of what a lot of people are saying at those meetings.
Okay, very good. All right, item 6B, planning commissioner items. Monica, you want to start?
Two things. Does it, do you know what business is there kitty-corner from the coastal mortuary?
I'm sorry, did you hear that?
The coastal mortuary on Narbonne, Narbonne, yeah. Kitty-corner from it. Do you know what business is there?
Off the top of my head, I don't.
Isn't that the golf, the virtual golf place?
I have no idea. There is no sign or anything. And I just see people going in and out. It was just.
The little tiny one on the corner?
Yeah.
The one with the glass? That was the virtual golf. I think it's still, but I don't think it's the same anymore. I think they've.
Well, it used to be a psychologist's office. And then they took everything down. And then now there's nothing.
It was a physical therapy office and then.
Physically whatever.
And then, and then it was a gym.
I think they actually, I haven't seen anybody with cars in there. And I go by there all the time. I think they vacated.
Well, I actually drive by there every day with the office. But there are a few cars that are in and out of there. But I haven't seen anybody in.
Have you seen that girl sitting across the street on the sidewalk?
Sits there every day and does her.
But then she'll go into that building once in a while.
She lives at Metawar's building. Because she's on the, she's on the sidewalk by the, on her side.
Right.
Even if it's 100 degrees or raining out, then she'll sit across the street, then she'll sit back. Every single day, I see her texting when she's out there.
And she goes in that, that building though, too.
She must work at home and then come out, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, it's weird how she just sits there, but.
Yeah, okay.
But she's not hurting anybody. She's just sitting there doing her texting.
No, 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 I was just curious as to, you know, what's going on. And I think we ought to do an improvement. When they show our pictures up there, they ought to just glamorize us a little bit. So not everybody looks 100, like I would, so I don't talk. Okay, thank you.
Do some Photoshop for us.
JP, where are you at the Photoshop? Okay, so anything else? Brenda, anything?
I have nothing.
Joaquin?
Yeah, I just want to apologize, sorry, buddy, for not making it last month. I found myself on the way to the hospital and I am now a grandfather. That's all.
Congrats.
That's a good one.
Mike, anything?
Nope.
Jay?
Congratulations to Mr. Santos.
Yes, thank you.
Grandfather Santos.
Boy.
Now, are you, are you Papa Smurf now? Oh, you had to have been in tears.
Oh, I, it was amazing.
Okay, well, congrats again.
Thank you.
Item 6C, commissioner to attend city council meetings. We have Tuesday, September 5th, the day after Labor Day, and September 19th.
I'll take the 19th.
Okay, thank you.
Isn't that, isn't that the day that they canceled because of the Labor Day weekend?
They're still having the 5th. They're still having the 5th, the meeting on the 5th.
So are you going to go then? Thank you. Well, if you can't make it, we'll still hear what happens afterwards. Okay. Labor Day, no, more of Labor Day. Okay, with that being said, I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn in the memory of those that have lost their lives in Maui. Anyone wants to second that motion?
All second. All second.
Okay, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Thank you, David, and thank you, Brianna. Thank you, Linda.
Thank you, Laura.
Thank you, Laura.